Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, December 28th, meeting of the zoning board of Tuscaloosa. Glad to have a good turnout, holiday meeting. We're stacked or pinched between Christmas and New Year's. So it's good to see everyone. I'm gonna start with our introductions. My name is Rob Stewart. I am the chairman, acting chairman of the ZBA. And I'm gonna start to my far left and have the rest of the board introduce themselves.
Tim Gillum.
Michelle Coley.
Paul Rollins Jr.
Linda Ford.
And I want to welcome Mr. Gillum. This is his first meeting. He was newly appointed to the ZBA last month. And Ms. Coley, who's been with us for a three-year term as supernumerary, has also been appointed as a full-time board member. So welcome to both of you. And then I'd also like to acknowledge our staff that's here. Starting with Ms. Emily Hayes, she's our neighborhood resources coordinator. Mr. Jonathan Bowen, planner. Ms. Angie Terrell, administrative assistants in the back. Mr. Oto Tumo Kamo, who's our deputy city attorney. Mr. Mike Gardner, who is our associate city engineer. And Mr. Kevin Jones, who is helping us with our video and audio production and the streaming. So thank all of them for their help. The Board of Adjustment does not have the authority to enact zoning laws or special exceptions, nor does the board have... Excuse me. Or special exception, nor does the board have authority to rule on claims of equal protection of the law or the fairness or unfairness of any zoning ordinance. By virtue of state law and city ordinances, the purpose of the ZBA is as follows. To hear appeals from decisions of the zoning officer of the city. Grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the city council. Grant variances from the terms of the zoning code when owing to the special conditions, a literal enforcement of the code would result in unnecessary hardship. And so the spirit of the zoning ordinance can be observed and substantial justice done. It may be helpful for the petitioners and the public to understand in regard to what is an unnecessary hardship. No one factor determines what is an unnecessary hardship. But all relevant factors, when taken together, must indicate that the plight of the premises in question is unique and that they cannot be put reasonably to a conforming use because of the limitations imposed by them by reason or by their classification in a specified zone. Variances should be granted sparingly and only under unusual and exceptional circumstances. When a literal enforcement of an ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. The reasons for granting a variance must be substantial, serious, and compelling. Circumstances that are not hardships. Self-inflicted or self-created, inconvenient, personal. A variance may not be granted where the property owner merely suffers a financial loss of a kind that is common to all other property owners in the used district. Loss of future rent is common to all property owners similarly situated and is not an unnecessary hardship for variance to be granted. The main question is whether, due to special conditions, a literal enforcement of a zoning ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. Kind of a working definition of unnecessary hardship is as follows. The property cannot be put to any reasonable use under its current zoning classification. It must be a unique and peculiar difficulty relating to the property of a serious and significant nature. It must relate to the property and not any personal issues. This includes economic, financial gain or loss. The zoning board of adjustment, by virtue of state law in the city of Tuscaloosa ordinances, does not have the jurisdiction or authority to consider, interpret, and/or enforce any term or condition of subdivision, covenants, and/or homeowners association rules or regulations. These matters are therefore not relevant areas of inquiry by the board or any petition. Such covenants or regulations are between the private parties involved and not the ZBA. That having been said, any decision made by the ZBA or any particular case does not necessarily preclude the enforcement of such subdivision covenants and/or HOA rules or regulations by other lawful means. If you wish to speak on any matter before the board this evening, either for or against an item, and you are not the property owner, petitioner, or designated agent, staff has been notified of your request and you will have the opportunity to speak during the requested agenda item. This is a public hearing. It is being recorded, videotaped, and is streaming live on the city's website, Facebook, as well as local cable TV. Proper decorum, civility, and respect for others is required at all times. When you are at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone and state your name and address. All comments should be directed to the board. No questions or comments are to be directed to the city staff. Representative capacity. Any person wishing to speak on behalf of another person, group, or entity shall provide written authorization to the chairperson from the person, group, or entity being represented. Immediate family members defined for this purpose as spouse, parent, or child do not have to provide such written authorization when speaking on behalf of another immediate family member. The board reserves the right to limit the time of remarks and comments depending on the relevancy, redundancy, petitions with lengthy sign-up sheets, and to preserve good order. Tonight, we will not be putting a cap on time. We don't have that many here in the audience. So be reasonable when you make your comments, but we're not gonna be putting a timer on anyone tonight. I would ask the city staff to confirm for the record that all the appropriate and required public and individual property owner notices for each of the cases upon the docket of petitions now before the board have been made in accordance with the law.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for the petition to present their case, for the public to inquire and make their views known about the petition, and for the board members to gather relevant facts before making its decision. City staff will introduce the petition and present facts and information to the board concerning the same. The petitioner or the petitioner's designated representative will be asked to make comments and answer questions from the board. The members of the public will then be afforded an opportunity to make inquiries and comments. At the close of the public comments, the petitioner will be asked to respond to the comments if necessary. The chair may then permit the public to respond, but only to any new issues raised by the petitioner in rebuttal. At the close of public comment, or once the board is satisfied that it has received all relevant information on a petition, the chairman will close further comment or discussion, and the board will then discuss the matter and vote on the petition. Our board has a standing motion to approve. In regard to every request in a petition requiring a vote by the board, there's a standing motion to approve the request, thereby not necessitating a motion or second for each such matter. In response to said standing motion, the ZBA members, when polled by the chair, may vote yes to approve the request or no to deny the request. Or before their vote, thereon, any member may recommend conditions for discussion, which there appears to be unanimity. Thereon, the chair will read into the record as conditions upon the standing motion to approve the request. Four votes are required to approve any petition, not a simple majority of the board. The yard signs that have been placed in front of the properties, if you are a landowner or property owner, please leave in place. The city will pick those up as quick as they can get out. Pursuant to ALACODE Section 11-52-81, 1975, any party aggrieved by any final judgment or decision of such board of zoning adjustment may, within 15 days thereafter, appeal therewith to the circuit court by filing with such board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision from which the appeal is taken. In case of such appeal, such board shall cause a transcript of the proceedings and the action to be certified to the court to which the appeal is taken, and the action in such court shall be tried de novo. If a petition has not already been continued prior to the mailing of notifications to surrounding property owners, it may only be continued if the person to request a continuance... By the person to request a continuance. If the petitioner or the representative of the petitioner fails to appear at the hearing, the case will not be docketed for a later meeting until the petitioner has paid an additional filing fee. Continuances are for one month. The board may, on its own motion, continue a hearing. The board members have had a chance to review tonight's agenda items. Do any of the members have a conflict of interest with any of the cases on tonight's agenda? Ms. Hayes, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
And we do have the minutes to approve? And give me the date on those. I don't have those in front of me, if you don't mind.
The March 2022 minutes.
Has everyone had a chance to read over, review the March 22 minutes? Twenty twenty-two minutes? Okay, I'm gonna start by voting from the left.
I make a motion to approve the March 22 votes.
All those in favor, starting with Mr. Gillum?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Minutes approved. Does the city attorney's office have anything to report?
One case in circuit court, Zia Finn Yee versus zoning board of adjustment, case number CV 2022-000089. That is a bench trial with no date set.
What was the name on the petition?
Zia Finn Yee. It was a bed and breakfast in Wood Manor.
Over off of Hargrove? Or Hackberry? Off Hackberry?
And yes.
Was there anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayes?
Okay, so I will give you all a very brief update on this past month's, or this month's framework code update. This is more so applying to the Planning and Zoning Commission versus y'all. This is just updating the subdivision regulations. It's carrying forward many of the regulations that exist today, but there are new sections, clarifications, modifications, that have been incorporated throughout it to outline clear modern regulations, improve user-friendliness, and support decision-makers in reviewing applications. So the current subdivision regulations were adopted in 1980. They don't provide direct guidance on regularly seen topics. They also don't account for how large the planning jurisdiction is, which is everything that is outside. It includes everything that y'all have to deal with, but also those areas that are not zoned that are still within the city's jurisdiction that y'all don't see. So this current subdivision articles, they are nine. They're a little bit confusing. They are gonna reduce it to seven. Now, in the framework meeting, they did break it down by each one, so if y'all are interested in seeing exactly what those changes are, that meeting is available on the website and it's still on the city's Facebook page. Just some notable updates is provisions recognizing appropriate reviewing bodies, applicability to existing and future subdivision, consolidating some definitions, summarizing application types and procedures, aligning regulations, and it just creates general regulations for subdivision. So the next meeting is virtual only. It's gonna be on January 4th. Gonna discuss land use character types, difference between character types and zoning, and how to use the character types. Really good meeting for y'all to tune into. So the cases that were withdrawn by staff, just as an FYI, are ZBA 13522, as well as ZBA 13922. So we'll move into our first case, ZBA 13222. Dan Sutter petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 13077 Country Club Drive, Zoned R1, Council District 3. Here's an aerial view of that property on the lake. And then a closer aerial view. So just going back to this, all of the properties surrounding it in that kind of gray-white, that is all in the PJ. This property was annexed in by the previous owner. So here are just some views from the streets. They did recently install this driveway. They expanded the current, or the previous driveway into this now. Just a couple of views from the additioners' cameras. If you can kinda see. Playable regulations. This is a new short-term rental request. The house is six bedrooms and five and a half bathrooms. No violations or complaints. So there has been some questions as to why this was able to surpass that moratorium, which is now no longer in effect. It was because the previous property owner did have a license on the property, and the moratorium was only on new short-term rentals. So this wasn't considered new because the previous property owner had a license. This property owner is requesting for 12 vehicles and eight adults. If approved, staff recommends five vehicles and 10 adults. Do y'all have any questions for staff?
When it was approved previously, it was approved for?
For vehicles, eight adults.
And different owner?
Different owner. It was under someone that we do see pretty frequently come before the board. That was a management company.
And what change? You mentioned the parking changed considerably.
It did. So originally, the driveway was a little bit smaller. They've expanded it to a much larger driveway now.
Any other questions?
We did get one public comment in opposition, but that's all that we received in petitioners here.
Thank you. And if I could have Mr. Sutter come to the podium, please.
My name is Dan Sutter, and I am the designated agent for Jeremy Webby, who is with me today. He's the property owner.
Can you state your address?
My address, the address that I'm petitioning for?
Or your address?
My address is 1505 Waters Edge Drive, Northport.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So Jeremy Webby is with me, and he's the owner of the property. I was the designated agent because we weren't sure whether he was gonna be here. He's done substantial improvements to the property, and he knows, can answer any questions dealing with the parking. But as far as the size, some of the things when we put in the parking, he has two garages that can at least park four vehicles and are designed to park two boats. So there's plenty of parking there that, you know, I know we have five, but the reason we put 12 vehicles is because he has some parking inside of garages that, you know, not just out along the road, but he could tell you about the dimensions of the property if you want any questions on that.
What was, I know the front, if you could, Ms. Hayes, go back to the street view. It showed a good bit of brickwork, that semicircle drive. The other garage you referred to, is that to the left where that?
That's the one where you see the pickup truck. You have one there, and then the one to the right, I believe.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Jeremy Webby, 13077 Country Club Drive. Thank you guys for your time today. Do you have a pointer, and I can, I'm not sure if Emily, if you're... Touch? Fancy. I gotta talk. I'm chairman of our Planning and Zoning, Gordon Broward, and we don't have anything this fancy. Alright, so... How do I, just touch it, you said? Okay. Okay, so obviously, all of the, you guys have it on the screens in front of you? So all of the pavers that you see there, there's about 6,000 square feet of pavers just up front. So as you can see, that's a full-size crew cab Dodge pickup truck there. So you can easily put eight or 10 cars just in this circular piece. As well as, if you see right here, in front of the smaller garage, there's also a parking area. And this entire area up here, which, is there a back button here? This entire area here is made wide enough so you can park cars there as well. And the reason for that is, we purchased the home, my wife and I, because we have two kids here at UA. One of which doesn't get to come home in the summer. He has to stay here. So we have a lake home in Florida, and we understand that there's gonna be tremendous amount of parking needed when there's friends, family, et cetera. Their previous home was just under 2,000 square feet when we purchased the house, and it was allowed four cars and eight people. The home is just shy of 6,000 square feet now. As well as has a 1,500-square-foot boat garage. So it went from a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bathroom house to, as you can see, a six-bedroom, five-and-a-half-bathroom house. So, you know, we'd love it if, we respect staff's opinion on trying to lower the parking and the amount of people, but clearly, we've demonstrated how many people can be there and how many parking spaces there are as well. We were told that this, when we purchased the property, that it had the short-term rental designation, and we'd had to keep it, or we'd like to keep it, in the event that we wanted to rent the property, not that we have any plans to. We have a property in town that's had a license for a year and a half, and we've never rented it. But in the event that we wanted to, or someone asked us to, we wanted to have the ability to do so. So greatly appreciate you guys' time, and if you have any questions, me, I'm happy to answer them.
Yep. You mentioned the garage. It's large enough for a boat?
Yes, sir.
Is it gonna be open for your renters if you were approved to use, or is...
Yeah, so there's two garages. There's one regular three-car garage, and then there's another 1,500-square-foot boat garage that's there. So no, the boat garage will not be open to renters, if we were to ever rent it. I mean, it'll have our personal boat and vehicles in there.
Does anyone live in there on a regular basis? You mentioned two children here in town.
No, 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 no. No. My kids live in the dorm. One lives in the dorm, one lives here in town. It's a little bit far for them to come back.
So if you're not here visiting, it's sitting vacant?
It's sat empty for a year and a half now. A little over, actually, not a year and a half. We bought it about this time last year.
If you were approved, you mentioned short-term rental somewhere else. Where was that that you said you engaged in?
At River Condominiums.
Okay.
And we have never rented it.
Never rented it, okay.
Ever.
Have you had experience, you mentioned you live elsewhere out of town? Do you have experience in any other state or city, in any city, renting short-term rental as an operator?
I'm the chairman of the board for our Planning and Zoning Board, our Environment Rental Board in Bragg County, our Marine Board, and the State Commission, so I have a lot of experience with what you guys are going through here today. I have a property in Lake Placid, Florida, that has been rented before. Is it rented all the time? Absolutely not.
Now, have you put together a list of rules and regulations if you were to be approved to rent it?
Yeah, we have not yet, but if we were to rent it, we will certainly comply with that.
And you mentioned you reside in Florida?
Sir.
Who, if you were to be approved and you were to actually rent it, who would be the responsible party here in Tuscaloosa?
Mr. Sutter's our responsible party, right?
Okay. So Mr. Sutter, you would be, middle of the night, if you get a call, a disturbance, or broken pipe, or anything of that nature, you would be responding, or?
I'm just across the lake.
Okay. So that would be the agreement forward for you to fill that role? Okay. So you would have your contact information obviously posted to do that?
We will, yeah. Whatever the rules and regulations are with a person of responsibility, we would absolutely comply with them. Even if it means hiring a property manager. It's more of if, not when. If we wanted to, then we would 100% do it. And I just wanna be very clear, because, you know, we've never rented the other property. We just have paid for the license year after year to have the ability to, should we ever want to.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
My concern is the 12 people. This is a neighborhood, and 12 people that you're requesting seems to be a significantly large number, even though your house can accommodate that many people. It's a neighborhood. So I don't think I would be in favor of 12. I just...
Understand, and I respect that. Let me paint a picture for you, so maybe you understand where I'm coming from. My wife and myself decide to come, and we invite two other couples who have kids here at school.
You're not gonna be short-term renting it. It's your home.
I'm painting a picture if I was. If I was, if I was to be a renter, my wife and I come with another couple who have kids here, and we have two kids of our own that are at school here. They have two kids of their own that are at school here. I can tell you, just my son and daughter at our condo in River, we've had 14 people making Thanksgiving dinner for kids.
That wouldn't be a short-term rental, though. That would be your family.
But if I didn't own this house, and I wanted to do a short-term rental for Thanksgiving, like we did this year, that would be the exact case. So I wanna make sure we're compliant, because if we can sleep 18 bodies, we're only asking for 12. We have six bedrooms. So we can sleep two people a bedroom. That's automatically six couples. If I was a short-term renter. I mean, I understand and respect your opinion relative to 12 people. Sounds like a lot. But if you put it in perspective with three or four couples...
I have four children and nine grandchildren. I completely understand.
You 100% can appreciate that.
But still, they're family, and I think the difference that I see between short-term rental and your family coming in, they're not gonna be renting it. You will be there. So I am not in favor...
You're saying my family. I'm saying if I rented it as a short-term person...
I understand what you're saying.
Right, and I brought just my family, 12 wouldn't be enough. So, yeah.
Any other questions?
Is it on sewer or septic? What's the?
It's on septic. So the way I was made to understand it, we're in the county, and the previous owners worked here in town, and their children apparently, and this is what I was told, so don't do this gospel, wanted to attend a certain school here in town, so they asked to be annexed to Tuscaloosa.
Do you have anything else for us?
No, sir. I just wanted to see if anyone else had any other questions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have anyone currently signed up to speak either for or against, but if there's anyone in the audience, this is your last chance to come forward and comment if you so choose. Okay, no one has selected to speak, so we are, at this point, gonna close public discussion and move to board comments. This house, we're familiar with prior to this board had heard, or most of this board had heard initially from a different owner, and it was previously approved for 10-5?
Eight.
Eight-four, excuse me. Eight-four was before the renovations and before the additional parking, which is a very large increase, as you can see, in the size of the home from what was stated, the earlier bedroom count, along with the parking across the front. So that dynamic has changed greatly. As the petitioner said, he realizes he is the only home that has been annexed into the city. If you could go back to a zoning map. Thank you. So this home, and I think there's one or two others relatively nearby, perhaps, that were also contiguous to the lake that chose to annex in as well. In saying that, the homes around this home that are in the county, there are no regulations on short-term rental. So they could pretty much seek to do what they chose to do. But being that it's in the city, it's governed under the short-term rental ordinance. And I know you built, added on, but to the home, and obviously, it's more spacious. It's a three-quarter acre lot, roughly, a good-sized lake lot. But we still, you make... Oh, acre and a half? Okay, that's not in the city. That strip, yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay. It says point nine, excuse me. No, that's not you. Let's see. Point, point seven-six acres, just the original lot. But in saying that, it's a good-sized lot. It's on the lake. We know people entertain and have big crowds. That's normal. However, under the short-term rental license in the regulations, the city, you know, we're now five years in, it's a moratorium currently. City's looking at, you know, reviewing it over time. It's been amended two or three times since its inception. That being said, we're highly sensitive as the city and the ordinance and this board, who has to sit to regulate these, to make sure it's a good fit for the surrounding neighborhoods. So even though you may have six bedrooms and ample space and more, enough parking for your request, that's a bit above the reach of what we have approved in the past for any house. A house might be able to put in 15 bedrooms and 100 parks, but we're not inclined to maximize it just because it's there, because there is an impact on the surrounding neighbors that becomes an issue because, again, I'm sure you're gonna do your due diligence if you rent it and monitor things, but at least when you're there with your family and you can have more people, because it's acceptable, there is a little more... But at least when you're there with your family and you can have more people because it's acceptable, there is a little more control there. So, based on that, I'm in favor of granting the petition. However, with the conditions of allowing a maximum, following city staff's recommendation, a maximum of 10 adults, five vehicles for a total of 30 nights in the first calendar year with a one-year probationary term. Now, along with that, if you are to be approved by vote in one year, you would come back. If you chose to renew the license, if it's approved, you would come back before this board. At that point, we have the ability to look at going forward for three years. But it is a one-year cap on that, just so you're aware of that. And if I could have comments from Mr. Gilliam.
I agree.
So, for me, I'm in agreement with the 10 adults, five vehicles, 30 nights and one year. It's your first year and usually that's your probationary period. So, we'd like to see if you even rent it because you even said that that may not even be a possibility. And then if you go through that year, no problems, no complaints, then we can revisit possibly going up on the number. But usually, to me, when you start getting more than 10, 12 people at the home, that is an impact on the community. And that's the thing that we want to make sure we minimize, that when we have a short-term rental, that it's not impacting the community. It's as if nobody knows what's going on at the home. So, that's my concern. So, I'm okay with 10 adults, five vehicles, 30 nights and one year.
I agree with other board members. I'm in favor of the five vehicles, 10 adults, 30 nights for one year.
I can agree with the 10 adults, five vehicles, 30 nights, one year.
If there's no further discussion amongst the board, we'll move to a vote. ZBA 132-22. Dan Sutter petitions for a special exception to allow, to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 13077 Country Club Drive, zoned R1, Council District 3 with the following conditions. A maximum of 10 adults, five vehicles parked off-street, a maximum of 30 nights in the calendar first year and for a term of one year. With additional conditions, no accessory structures on the property can be occupied by anyone at any time. And a city of Tuscaloosa business license must be obtained prior to starting operation. Voting with Mr. Gilliam.
I agree. Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay. We'll move on to our next case. ZBA 13422. Mavis Tire Supply, Nathan Fuss petitions for a special exception to allow an automobile repair shop on the property located at 4951 Rice Mine Road Northeast, zoned B in Council District 3. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view. It's right there. Publix is to the southeast of this. And then just a view, this is a vacant lot currently. So, the applicable regulations, Section 2491 special exception specifically calls out automobile repair shops. And this is the primary criteria for it. There is no discretionary criteria, just as an FYI. But just kind of laying out exactly what that criteria is. The petitioner is requesting a special exception to allow a Mavis Tire Supply. Their main business model is the retail sale of tires. But they also have the addition of brakes, shocks, struts, exhaust systems, oil changes, state vehicle inspections and fluid replacement. They do not perform engine work. Their business will employ between seven to 10 individuals. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Petitioner does state that no work will be conducted outside of the building, which that is a part of that criteria, the primary criteria for this special exception. And no parts or tires will be stored outside. They are proposing 30 parking spaces, which does meet the minimum requirement. It's around 18 for that requirement for parking. So, this is the proposed site plan. This is not something they're going to be strictly held to. This is just showing you an idea of what that site plan is going to look like. So, there are eight bay doors. They've got the access from that interior road that you can also access Publix from. And these are the proposed elevations. Y'all have any questions for staff?
Could you go back to the zoning map, please?
Oh, this zoning map is incorrect. So, now you can see that a little bit better. This is the property that we're looking at. All this to the north is considered, it's outside city limits, it's in RPJ. And then just a little bit further north is where that residential starts again. But all of the areas surrounding this are zoned B in, which is commercial.
Okay.
Do you have any more questions?
I know there were a significant number of emails.
We did. We received 24 comments in opposition to this petition. Do you have any more questions?
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Fuss and my address is 211 Perimeter Center Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia 30346. I'm here on behalf of my client, Mavis, here to answer any questions. Again, we did a good summary of our application. Here to answer any questions.
Can you tell us a little bit about kind of big, high-level overview of the project?
Yeah. So, we're proposing about a 7,000-square-foot minor auto repair building facility. The ordinance doesn't have a difference between major and minor. But we're a minor auto use typically. There's, they mainly do tires and brakes, but they also do shocks, struts and some other minor things. We have about seven to 10 employees that typical business hours, they do work weekends. That's, I guess, big picture.
Yep. This is a question for staff. The petitioner, Mr. Fuss, mentioned the specific designation in the ordinance. So, under B in Business Neighborhood, this commercial zoning, by right, the classification given to their business is not allowed by right?
Correct. It's a special exception.
Okay. And then back, you showed it earlier. Under the special exception, it is allowed if it meets the criteria or to be considered the primary criteria that you showed earlier.
Right. It's usually that's what is applied to these kind of situations. It doesn't have to be specific to that, to fall under that special exception. That's just kind of the criteria limiting exactly what they can do if it does fall within that.
Okay. Thank you. Is the parcel, is it under contract now?
Yeah, it's under contract with, I believe the current owner is Publix.
So, y'all will be, if this goes through and the project is approved through all the other approvals with the city, you will be moving towards closing on the property?
Correct. We've actually already submitted civil plans, I think, a couple of weeks ago. So, we're a little bit ahead of the game.
Can you bring up that civil drawing, site drawing? So, this is oriented looking north at the plat here.
Yep.
So, it'll be a single entrance from that side road, southern side of the lot line?
Correct. Yeah, I think it's a vacant bank on, on the other side. But there'll be no new access points to Rock Quarry Drive or Rice Mine.
So, the building that, what you showed earlier as far as the elevations, the architectural drawing? That'll be, where is this back, bottom right? Where will that be oriented?
The bottom right picture will be, I believe, on the north side facing Rock Quarry. And so, the bays will be facing Rice Mine and then the backside of Publix.
And then from the south is that lower left, which is your customer door?
Yep.
That's your main customer entrance?
Customer entrance, yep, on that south side.
And in the, in the parcel is the actual deed parcel. Will that include that grass or just your curb line of your east parking?
Say that again?
The actual lot lines. Will it contain any of that grass behind you to the east?
It will. I, I believe this is, this is probably from GIS. But yeah, I think the contract property is like 1.2 acres or so. But it does include all that grass area on the east side and that will remain grass.
Okay. So, y'all don't have any intentions of developing or doing anything on that grass?
No. We were in the initial stages going to propose a pond there, but we couldn't get that to work. So, we're doing an underground stormwater system.
And then I see, and I know this isn't under our purview, but I think it was discussed, and I don't know what y'all discussed earlier, the trash, the dumpster. It's showing on the north edge on Rock Quarry?
And their plans that they submitted, they, that has been resolved. That's something that we're working on with them.
Yeah, I think we shifted it down outside of that setback. But as they did drawing, I believe the latest plans we showed did show a second entrance. Is that correct?
That, that was what I wanted to just clarify, that the plans that I have under review show two access locations, but they're both off of the, the property, which is a private road that is owned by the public shopping center. But they do show two access points.
So, where you've highlighted on this drawing?
That is correct.
The other access, okay.
And the reason for that is because we had to shift the building because the property line was further south than anticipated on GIS. So, we were not able to get that drive access, that, I guess, separated drive access. So, we had to shift the building down and that was the cause for the, the two, or the extra curb cut there.
And then as part of going through, because it's not allowed by right, the primary considerations that the special exception allows. If you could pull those back up, please, Ms. Hayes. Okay. So, as we go through these, going with A, how, how are y'all addressing this or complying with this?
All, all of that is housed within the buildings and the architectural plans, I believe, have been submitted as well. And it will show all, all of that equipment being housed within the building.
And I know by the kind of catch-all for major and minor repair, we're looking at these. And B usually tends to lean towards major repair shops.
Yep.
But how does this play into how you treat your vehicles on a day, your customer vehicles on a daily basis? Where, where do they go?
For the most part, it's all by appointment. So, the customer will come, drop their car off, they'll either leave or they'll stay in the, in the waiting room, be there an hour or two. They don't store any vehicles outside. If they do store vehicles overnight, they will be housed inside within the bays.
Okay. So, overnight, after closing hours, there's not a customer vehicle on that property?
No.
That's visible to the public?
So, when it talks about your building, a big concern for the community is the aesthetics of the building. A lot of the other Maviss that are in town, there's concern that those buildings are not cared for as they would like in that area. So, how do you address that in building this from ground up? Is this like a flagship kind of Mavis or...
Yeah, it's one of their new, their newer Maviss. And we actually have another one by the Jacks that will be presented next month. And it's their, their new Mavis design. It's fully brick with a, with a glass roll outdoors.
And this is for that purpose of being in neighborhoods, kind of community? Is that something Mavis is moving towards, community-oriented?
Yeah. Newer, community-oriented and nicer, nicer buildings. They don't want the, the old metal, the sheet metal, older-style buildings. They're looking for the newer brick buildings.
And it's going to be fully brick all around?
Yep. Except for the, the glass roll outdoors. And I think up top, on, on the top side, they might have, yeah, some aluminum teal banding.
So, you have six bays in this building?
That must be incorrect from the, an old design. They do have a new architect on that, but there are only four bays on either side.
So, total of eight bay, I mean...
Total eight bay, yes.
Eight bay, so eight vehicles in, in the building at one time being worked on?
Yep.
What about, and you, if you're doing it by appointment, is everything by appointment or can it be walk-in?
There can be walk-ins, yep.
So, traffic, you got a school right here, you got a thoroughbred with Rice Mine Road. And you've got eight vehicles and you've got cars coming in for oil change. What, I know, I'm sure you've done a traffic study on this area before you pick a site.
Yeah. And, and they don't, like I say, a lot of it's through appointments. They'll have a couple walk-ins, but you know, they don't expect most people. If it's too busy, like over two-hour wait, they don't expect them to, to come and stay. They just expect them to, you know, apply for an appointment and come back at another time. And, and as Ms. Hayes said, the, the parking requirement is, I think, 18. And I, and I think we're, we're well over that.
Yeah. So, the only vehicles that'd be overnight would be if...
They're wait, maybe waiting for a park or something like that. But again, they don't do every, like heavy body auto work. So, you know, most, most of that would go, go elsewhere. It'd be just, like I say, mainly tire and brakes.
So, if a car remained overnight, it would be inside?
Yep. It'd be in one of the bay, in one of the eight bays.
Ms. Hayes, can you go back to the architectural drawing? The drawings of the exterior? Thank you. So, all brick and, and glass, what's your...
Yep.
Where is your HVAC equipment?
The HVAC equipment is, I believe, on the roof. But not possible.
Any other questions? Anything else for us now?
Nope. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We don't show anyone signed up, but yes, sir. Come on forward.
I get up here with trepidation, but because I'm actually on the agenda tonight, but interestingly enough...
State your name.
Brian Winter. And...
And your address, please.
7234 Commodore Drive, Northeast, 35406. I come up here tonight with trepidation because I'm actually representing somebody and I'm usually not against development. I didn't know, not know this was on the agenda. I actually own the building next door to the Sanovas Bank Building, which will probably be my future office when I get a, can breathe and move my office over there. This is a unique and frankly, a bizarre place to put this Mavis Tire building. Looking at what they do, I don't think most people in that area actually have their cars long enough to need a lot of those services. Maybe the oil change. So, my first concern is if it doesn't make it, what happens to this building? But more importantly, if you are inclined to pass this, my other concern is everything out in that area is, is institutional red brick. From the CVS to the Sanovas to the Publix, to the Rock Quarry Elementary School, to the Phelps Center. Everything else out there seems to fit and flow. And that's one of the things that I think we've been trying to do. So, if you are inclined to pass this, and you know, I, I really can't be against development per se if they want to put that there. God bless them. I would think that this would need to match all the rest of the brick and all the rest of the look at the area. And until it does, I think that it should, it's, you know, there, there are, if you go to other places in Atlanta, in Birmingham, when they have neighborhood areas like this, they require everybody to kind of stay in conformity. We've seen this downtown. We've seen this at the university sites. And I don't think 35406, this area 35406 should be any different. So, again, not against development. Kind of surprised that they want to put this there. But I think the brick needs to match everything else. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who'd like to come forward to speak either for or against the petition? No? Okay. Mr. Fuss. Typically, when a petitioner gives their opening statements and, and we have the rest of the audience come forward, if someone speaks out with some comments, if you would like to address any of those, you're more than welcome to come back to the microphone.
What I would just state to that is this is their, their typical standard colors. And I believe we are meeting all city architectural standards and requirements. and I believe we are meeting all city architectural standards and requirements with these colors.
Do you have any Mavis that are in red brick or any other color?
They do not. It's typically white and teal.
Just to clarify, you say y'all do zero major repair. I mean, I understand, you know, bodywork's different, but there's other repairs within your business, and y'all do not do that anywhere else in the Mavis business, anywhere?
No, they only do the minor auto repair, because a lot of the heavier bodywork requires, you know, additional parts on the building. And also, a lot of the times it's harder to get approved because they have junk cars that'll sit there overnight. So they typically tend to go towards the minor auto repair.
Similar to like an Express Oil or something like that?
Yeah, exactly. It's similar, just in and out, oil change or tires.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I've got a question for staff. Ms. Hayes or Mr. Gardner? A petitioner or representative of the audience had a question about color. In our ordinances for commercial, do we have anywhere that states you have to align to a certain brick color, paint color, architectural design of any sort?
We do not.
We do not, and that is across the city of Tuscaloosa, across our commercial ordinances?
Correct, it's even across the residential as well.
So the city currently, I know we're getting ready to go through the whole redo of the zoning, but to date, there is nothing that the city does to mandate a look, color scheme, roof line, anything? All right, thank you. If there's no one else to? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before we close public comment? No? Okay. This point, public comment is closed, and we will move to board discussion. And I don't know if you have it, Ms. Hayes, on BN zoning. I don't know if you can get to municipal code quickly. If you can, just show what's allowed, if we could, to start with in BN. BN is where her cursor is. It's the center column.
As we're going through, it'll probably be easier to do it this way.
So if it has an X, it means it is allowed?
It means it's permitted, yes. This is all under the permitted uses. So things like an automobile truck parts store, car wash, like just across the street, across where I'm from this, there's the Reds Car Wash. That's permitted by right.
So that by right, and by right, for everyone's understanding, it would not come to this body at all?
Correct.
Go through solely administrative?
Right.
What was that, club?
Club or lodge for, it's like a fraternity or sorority. Bake shop, things like that.
So you could?
General offices.
You could put in a laundry there?
Package store, liquor store.
You could put a liquor store there. Of course, food service. Go on down a little bit. All right, thank you. Just for perspective, when the city reviews this, again, under BN, there are many different uses that could go in there, would be held to the same standards through the LDP permitting, et cetera. And then in this case, like several others that were mentioned, it clearly had an extra layer of protection, if you will, on the type of business. And that included two types. You could have a parts store, retail parts store, like any name your brand, could sit right on that corner, open maybe longer hours, et cetera, or fast food, open from 5:00 a.m. till midnight by right. But when you get to repair, the city, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hayes, the city put in specifically minor and major repairs were kind of clumped together. Is that right?
It's just, there is no definition as of now for minor repair work. That was something that, at the discretion of the zoning officer, they could rule whether something was considered minor and wouldn't have to come before you, in the same way that we do home occupations. But the only definition that we truly have is major repair work.
Thank you. All of that being said, to understand why we got here tonight, the three primary considerations that it shows, and we showed earlier, are things that we as a body are having to vet to be sure on a minimum basis they meet those. Being that this is, in essence, minor repair, the petitioner has represented and stated that they have met these. Cars parked won't be out all night, if there are any left, inside, closed up. No tires or parts stored outside. And all of the, and under A, all of the equipment is housed and repair work done inside the envelope of the building. So they have met that standard is what we have been posed to look at. I know we heard one comment earlier that the building doesn't look like most or many of the other businesses. Of course, McDonald's and Taco Casa and CVS, I don't think are red brick. I could be wrong without looking at a Google Street View. But there are other businesses that aren't necessarily red brick. But again, the city has no control, unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to view it, over the look of a building. And I don't know if that will change in the new code, you know, moving forward. It may or may not. But just so we're clear on that, that's not something the city regulates or, you know, has any control over. The business, another comment was made, the business, you know, why would they go there? I can't speak, I'm very familiar with development. I cannot speak for Mavis, but the metrics most commercial businesses use are very involved on their looking at market potential and the opportunity. I don't think they would haphazardly, as a business, the size they are, would haphazardly cite it. They're citing it because they see business opportunity there. You know, they're going to make a substantial investment in dirt and in the building to be in business there. Essential services, again, the city doesn't dictate what goes in. There's a large grocery store there that's a, I think, most people who live in the O6, I do, I shop there. There are a lot of essential services that come because of the success of the area. Look at the price point of the homes and the demand for the dirt in that area. I think it's a no-brainer why business follows. Typically, you get enough rooftops, especially with the incomes that are in that area. When you do one mile, three mile, five mile, you will see how many businesses would love to be there. Traffic counts are getting there now. You're going to see more. You look at what's happening with the lots along both of the main thoroughfares there, they will develop. And that's a sign of success. That's a good thing. What comes with it is traffic. That wasn't mentioned tonight. But the 24 emails we got in opposition, there were a multitude of reasons. Some generically just don't want it, no, don't want that type of business here. Some went on to state that's just not the look that they want for the neighborhood. But again, there's nothing that the city has in its ordinances if the petitioner, any petitioner, follows through and meets those objectives to basically pick and choose what business goes where. So based on that, and one other thing to note, if you could show the zoning map one more time with a little bit of a blowout or back, there's a white brick building right there. But if you look at it, everything that's shown from a true satellite view that's not color-coded is not in the city of Tuscaloosa. All of those homes due north of there that aren't in the city, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hayes, if one or two or three of those lots sold on a corridor that's highly desirable for new development, what would the city, if anything, have to say over what type of business went there?
We wouldn't have any zoning regulations over what that use could be.
So you could put something way off the charts. The land's too valuable to do something dumb. I don't think a pig farm or junkyard would go there. But it could be something that may not be desirable to a lot of the people who live here. The city has zero control over, okay? And that goes for the land that we see now, if it doesn't choose to request an ex in, if it's developed, okay? Sometimes that gets lost on what you can't do across the street. The city does not have a say on that dirt. The closest city residence, family dwelling is close to 900 feet north. Is that right? Due north, not including the ones that aren't in the city. Okay, so we've got about 900 feet, when we talk about noise, close to three football fields in, you know, straight line distance from that business with already a whole lot of traffic traveling and more coming up and down that road as far as noise. So I can't see, after reading through every one of the 24 emails and listening to just the one person, I figured we would have a room full of folks here tonight in opposition to this, I can't find a reason, a bona fide factual reason to deny this request with what the petitioner has met and has been asked to meet. So based on that, I'm in favor in voting in favor of the petition. Mr. Gilliam?
I have concerns with the traffic in that area with the school. Bus is right there making the turn in for the school. If you drive through there around 7:30, 8 o'clock, 8:30, it gets backed up. I've noticed other businesses, some of the Mavis, if you go there afternoon times and mornings, if they've stacked up, they've got cars stacked back and back. So I do have concerns with the traffic and the noise as well. With the bay doors open facing in Rice Mine Road, if you go to another tire repair or tire shop, they've got their air guns operating. It's really loud, you know, and that's facing Rice Mine Road, right toward the doctor's office there. So I have some concerns in that manner.
So for me, with Mavis Tire, you know, business is what we look for, growth and so forth, and it's a sign of growth. So it's hard for me to, you know, see a reason why it can't come, you know, based on the parameters that we have. You know, I understand about the noise concern, but that's a high-traffic area. So there's a bit of hustle and bustle going on during those times, 8:00 to 5:00, 8:00 to 6:00 anyway. It's right there by the Publix. There's a lot of going back and forth. I don't see it as being something that's going to totally disturb the community. You know, it's a brand-new building. It's a fully brick building, so they're going to put their nicer building there. And I understand the concerns of the current Mavis that are in town and looking at those kind of, but those were buildings that were taken over from other tire companies, other tire places. So I think they kind of got what they got. So I really just cannot see a reason why, other than people just don't want it, you know? And I'm trying to think of if another business comes and you say you don't want that business, what position does that put the landowner in being able to, you know, sell their property or do something with their property? This puts us in a tough position. I understand, I want to respect communities, but I also want to, you know, see the city grow and expand. So I am in favor of the Mavis Tire supply.
I'm in favor of granting a special exception.
I am also in favor. I do know the traffic problem. I have family that lives on that side and has to go through that intersection every day, or Monday through Friday. And I think that just comes with growth, and I, but I am in favor of this special exception.
Okay, if there's no other board comment, then we'll move to a vote.
What about the two-week storage? Could that be amended to shorten that storage time?
And did you hear that, Ms. Hayes?
You could put a condition on it that limited the amount of days in which they are storing them. But even with this, this is specifically talking about outside storage. So it's up to the board's discretion of how you want to constrict that if you want to.
Now, the petitioner did state, his statement was, anything that did stay overnight, for some reason, would be only inside.
Yeah, I do.
Are you okay with if something is inside the building, doors would be closed?
Correct, yes. I'm talking about outside.
Okay. Yeah, if we can put in that exception, which would honor what Mr. Fuss stated they would do or would not do as a condition. Okay, you had no outside storage overnight of vehicles.
Now, would it be just vehicles? Because B states dismounted vehicles or wrecked vehicles, and they don't operate on wrecked or dismounted vehicles.
Could any just vehicle without putting any extra qualifier mean nothing can be stored outside?
I mean?
As a condition?
Y'all do have discretion to put a condition on there, whatever it may look like.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable.
So do we want to put a certain number of days? Because, you know, if a car, a customer couldn't get there at 6:00 and the car got left outside?
Well, they've got eight bays.
16 cars inside.
Yeah, that's 16. No, excuse me, there's four and four. So eight vehicles, I think, would be fair to live by if they stated they would not do that.
Okay.
That gives them eight spaces.
I understand that, however, okay, if I'm dropping my car off at Barclay GMC and I want to drop it off in the morning, have my car the first one in the morning, I may drop it off that night after they close, but my keys are at Dropbox. And they would have, I mean, no knowledge of their car being left outside. And that could be a conflict of what we're voting on right now with no cars being left outside. So how can we oversee that?
Well, they said they would do it by appointment, that most of theirs were by appointment. They do have some walk-in, but it's mainly by appointment.
If we have nothing, they stated they would not leave them outside. They stated that. So that would be incumbent upon them to follow what they stated under this condition and communicate with their customers when they make appointments. You need, can't leave your car overnight. You know, that's an option here if we go with that. That way, it doesn't put them in an awkward situation. I mean, they've just not put in cars. They stated they could keep them inside. So that's up to them if we go through with that. Okay, if there's nothing else to add, board comment, we're going to move to a reading of the motion and vote. ZBA 134-22, Mavis Tire Supply LLC, petitions for a special exception to allow an automobile repair shop on the property located at 4951 Rice Mine Road, Zoned BN, Council District 3, with the condition that no vehicles can be left outside the building overnight on the premises. All parking of overnight customer vehicles would need to be inside the enclosed building. Voting with Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Moving on to our next case, ZBA 136-22, Sri Lata, and petitions for a special exception to operate an assisted living facility on the property located at 72555th Place East, Zoned R3, Council District 7. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. This is an existing assisted living facility. And then a closer aerial view. This is pretty far down 69 South, or excuse me, McFarland. And so with this, it's near Supers skate, a little bit past that. So front of the existing facility. applicable regulations, number 22, personal care home for adults. Discretionary criteria. Petitioner is requesting a special exception to continue to operate this personal care home. Business has been operating under separate ownership since the zoning board of adjustment granted them a special exception to do so in 2009. But due to a recent subdivision, the, and subsequent sale of this property, the current owner is required to obtain the special exception in their name to continue to operate that facility. They haven't had any issues here. Do y'all have any questions for staff?
So it's just the change in ownership?
Just the change in ownership is why they're having to come for the special exception.
And you said there were no issues here?
Nope.
Do they, I'm assuming what they operate, they're governed by the state or Health Department as far as all the regs, and that's all clear as far as?
Correct. As far as staff is aware.
Yeah, that's all I have. Anything?
Mr. Herndon is the designation. Mr. Herndon is the designation, designated agent to represent this petition.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the commission, Bobby Herndon, 27, 28, Lurleen Wallace Boulevard in the great city of Northport. He is representing Dr. Shri Lada Anne and her desire to continue the operations of a assisted living facility. Right now, it's known as Hammerick Highlands. It's been there for, since 2009. It was on, it's on 55th Street, which was a, an easement street. But now, since the plan has been signed and recorded, it's now a public street, it's the city of Tuscaloosa. But she just wishes to desire keeping it with the special exception to take care of the people in the assisted living facility.
So other than, Mr. Herndon, other than what Ms. Hayes stated, just the change in ownership's the only difference in the operation?
It's the change in ownership, yes, sir.
Okay. And again, the operation will continue licensed through the state, et cetera, forward? But no other change in the number, headcount?
No, just the change in ownership.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Herndon, I'm just curious, how many residents are there?
I really couldn't tell you. It's a, it's a large building, but I couldn't tell you how many residents are in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have anyone signed up to speak either for or against. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward? Come forward, please.
My name's Crawford Nixon. My address is 20130 Sanders Ferry Road, Tuscaloosa. I didn't know this was on the agenda. I have personal knowledge of the Hammerick Highlands facility. My mother's there and my mother-in-law are both there. There's 36 beds, best-run place I've ever been. I think the care has actually, and it was wonderful, Greg and Susan Hammerick owned it. They ran it like their own private med spa, if you can have that for assisted living. And what they offer now is actually an enhanced, due to the other facilities this company owns. So I, I'd be in favor of it, just telling you that.
Thank you.
If you had a question.
Any questions?
Probably no more than y'all do about it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak for or against? Okay. In that case, we will go ahead and close public comment and open board discussion. You know, it's just the change in ownership, which necessitated to come before this body again. No changes according to Mr. Herndon in the operation. Based on our last speaker, there was nothing, only spoke glowingly with two family members there. I don't think you get a better endorsement than that of a parent, you know, and another relative there in the home, you know, getting their care. So that's, that's good to hear. No issues in the past, the city's aware of it all. So I'm in favor of voting yes.
I, just change in ownership, I have no issue, I'm in favor of yes as well.
I agree with my fellow board members.
I'm in favor as well.
I'm also in favor.
There's no further discussion, we'll move to a reading of the petition and a vote. ZBA 136-22, Shri Lada Anne, petitions for a special exception to operate an assisted living facility on the property located at 72555th Place East, Zone R3, Council District 7, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, moving on, ZBA 137-22, Barbara Page, petitions for a special exception to allow specialized retail dealing with limited or specialized clientele on the property located at 1302 The Towns, Zone BNS, Council District 3. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. This is a vacant lot at the front of The Towns. Closer aerial view, it's right off Rice Mine. It's a view of the lot today. applicable regulations, 35.5 wholesale store dealing with, or wholesale store serving a limited or specialized clientele. This criteria does kind of lay out exactly what the primary and discretionary criteria are. This can be a little more specific to just some larger operations, kind of in the same way that the major repair work that we were discussing earlier. It just sets this major parameter of exactly what it cannot exceed, but it doesn't necessarily specify exactly with this. Petitioner is requesting a special exception to operate a luxury pet resort called the Paw Pet Resort. They will offer 11 villas and 10 suites for pets staying overnight, as well as 21 indoor kennels, want to specify that it's indoor kennels, for their daycare program on the second floor. They will also have an event space for special events. They offer an indoor play area with roll-up doors to allow for fresh air during the warmer months. But there will be fencing put in place to prohibit pets from accessing outside of the building footprint. The resort will also offer a sizable space for retail sale of various items. They also have a state-of-the-art grooming facility and spa services, a training academy for individual and group training courses. And there will be no kennels located outside of the building, oop, excuse me, and no play areas for off-leash dogs outside. All dog-related activities will be inside the building footprint as is required by zoning. So here is a, the existing site plan today, and then the proposed site plan. So you'll see on the eastern side of the property is where all of this that we're focusing on today is. Little over 23,000 square foot building. Proposed first-floor plan, so you'll see that play area, as well as those, that screening that I was talking about. This screening specifically, the petitioner has said, is just to screen from the public view of the dogs. The dogs aren't actually going to be able to access this area. It's going to be blocked right here where those doors are rolling up. They also have those villas that I was mentioning, suites, and then the day areas. Moving on to that second floor, you see the event space, staff offices, and other conference rooms. And then the proposed elevations. Do I have any questions for staff?
Can you go back to the criteria we're looking at under special exception? So this is falling under the definition of wholesale store serving a limited or specialized clientele?
Correct.
And here, it's, I know that's a catch-all, but it's put in that category because there's nothing remotely close to.
There's no pet resort called out in the 1972 code.
Didn't we see this on the one being built off just south of O'Reilly Auto Parts off of Queen City?
Oh, the, we did, we did. So with that one, it was an outdoor facility, they're going to have a lot of outdoor play areas, so we characterize that under outdoor amusement.
But it similarly didn't have a?
Correct, a specific category in which it fell in.
So, and this is pretty vague, because this doesn't sound like there, the primary has anything close to this. And it shows in VGO.
Mm-hmm.
And then when you went to the architectural drawing, the hand drawing, it showed those roll-up doors are there. Those dogs, you're saying, according to the petitioner, won't have access to the exterior?
Correct, there will be something blocking them from being able to access even those portions right there. Which they can talk on it a little bit better of exactly what that's going to look like. But we, as city staff, have said, you can't have any outdoor play areas for these animals.
And then if you could, just back to the overview of the site with the park. So this easternmost entrance, it has the single car, is that a ride-in only?
So that was something that we kind of discussed a little bit with, and I'll let Mike touch on it a little bit more, because it's kind of more of an engineering thing.
I know this is just a concept, but, and you can't actually see on this diagram what's, what's on to the east. I have somewhat of a concern about that eastern entrance as to where it's actually located with respect to other accesses to The Towns Boulevard. I would think that in the permitting process, we'll address any traffic concerns.
Okay, so that'll all be addressed in the LDP and moving down?
That's correct.
Now, the, and then one other thing on the top northeast corner, that's a cross-access there. That's a requirement for the adjacent property?
I think that is a requirement set forth in the covenants of The Towns or in the HOA.
It is, in the PUD approval, that was, the cross-access was required.
Any other questions?
So we did receive 16 comments in opposition, as well as one comment in support of this. And the petitioner is here, along with a couple other representatives that are working on this project with her.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Page. I'm at 1906 Point Clear Road, Tuscaloosa 35406. And I'm the owner of the Paw Pet Resort. It is an upscale pet resort, and we've already been introducing ourselves to the community. We just had a, excuse me, a Christmas festival that we did, it was a three-day, we ended up doing just three days, where we brought Santa in. We had, we did over 596 animals that we photographed, five different species. We started at 4:00, and people started lining up at 3:15. And we were supposed to end at 8:00, and we were still doing photographs with Santa at 9:00. And we did five different species of animals. So that was interesting to see. So we did have a lot of people come out and support this, and we did it, again, to introduce ourselves to the community. We are an upscale pet resort. We are not your typical go-play-in-the-mud, chain-link fences. We will have no chain-link fences anywhere in our facilities. And as far as kennels, we have no, we are a cage-free facility, which means everything is villas and suites. There will be no, you won't see chain-link fence anywhere in our facility. That's something, we are upscale. So I wanted to make sure that people knew that. We are having villas and suites, every rooms will have TVs, cameras, whether you can log in and look at your pet, see your pet. We also have fur bows that are going to be in all the rooms, so you can give your pets treats. You can have a spa day, tummy time, to give them a belly rub before they go to bed at night, massages, whatever your pet does, you pamper them while you're on vacation. So we are not your typical pet resort. Most places are not pet resorts. We actually are a pet resort where when you go on vacation, your pet is actually going on vacation too, with everything that we're providing for them. Any other?
Go ahead.
I have two questions. One, what's the maximum number of pets you can take?
We haven't completely figured that out yet. We're, because some people come with more than one pet. We will never put more than four pets per room, because like, we have four dogs, and if I went on vacation, I would want my four dogs together. But all the playtimes and everything will be playing at different times, so the dogs will be coming and going in the facility, do their different playtimes, or go into group training, things like that. But the maximum dogs, we haven't set yet. Once we get everything finalized, we'll have a back maximum number.
So would you say four per villa, and you have how many villas? I mean, just rough.
I think totally we're going to have, I think, what, 30? I'm not sure what we, number we, we've come down with yet with the building. We are trying to make it as big as possible, but as luxury as possible, because we've already got, I've got 83 people on a waitlist right now who want to go on and start signing their dogs up for daycare and things, and we haven't broke ground. I would say probably we'll have about 100 to 150 dogs for daycare. Boarding is usually less. But again, some of the suites could help up to four dogs if somebody has four dogs that they want to leave.
Thank you. My only other question is, you taught, we saw screening on the outside of the, of the area. What type of screening? What, what is it going to be?
It'll be like lanai screen. So there's fresh air always coming through when the doors are open.
So a color of a screen, I mean?
Well, we back up to woods.
Right.
So no one would ever see it.
Right.
But it would be whatever color that we needed, brown or gray or whatever the screen. And it would, you know, we'd have to use like no see where you can't get bugs through it, things like that.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be anything, but the only people behind us is the woods.
For right now.
Yeah, for now.
For now. We have to think about the future.
That's true.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayes, can you go to the aerial? Okay, with, your building would be sited on the east end, the right side.
Yes, closer to the businesses.
And right now, that's county, correct, to the north, those woods, or is it city? It is city. But it's not part of the PUD here at all, is that right? Okay. And then if you could go back to the hand architectural drawing? There, thank you. So the screening that Mrs. Ford asked about is, dogs won't have access, from what you're stating, to that area? That's what I understood from Ms. Hayes. Where would the dogs be able to go outside of the building?
They'll, pretty much are going to be mostly in the building. We will be able to take them out to go to the bathroom. It'll be a side area, because I don't want to untrain everybody's dogs who have brought me a dog to go inside. So there will be a small area, but they will be on a leash, walk out, go to the bathroom, walk in. But it's still going to be within our fenced area, so people would not even see that.
Is that inside the screening or outside?
That'll be right outside of the screening.
On the north side?
We're trying to figure out where to put it, where it's, but I, you know, we have to make sure the dogs go to the bathroom outside. And it'll be, you won't even know it's there based on the fence, but they, we have to, because I can't untrain everybody's dog who've trained their dog to go, to go.
Now, we, in the 24 or thereabouts, the emails that city received, we've all reviewed. Several of those, they mentioned smell, odors, waste. What is your plan on waste?
I've done some research within the, within, there's these things that you can get, that you put everything in, and it gets rid of it. It gets rid of the smell, it gets rid of it, kind of takes care of it. It, I don't know what you would, what they would call it.
Compost.
Yeah, it's like a compost, but it actually doesn't have a smell. It goes in, there's chemicals that are in it that dissolves everything, cleans up everything, and then it's filtered out.
And is that product on the market you're looking at purchasing?
It is, it is, yes.
For a commercial business with this volume?
Yes.
That many dogs?
Yes.
And then does that end product that goes through the solution, where does that go?
It will go in containers that are then taken away.
So that's not through your trash hauler, or is that some specific? And it's, it's leaving through a service? I'm just curious where it actually goes to leave the property?
Yeah, I'm still in the process of researching all of it, so I can find the best way to do it. But yeah, it's not going to have piles of poop sitting outside, excuse me, or trash cans of poop sitting outside. It's going to be thrown in dumpsters and thrown outside. It will be properly disposed of, because it's waste.
So it'll be stored outside in those containers?
Yes.
Until you have it removed from the property?
Yes. But it'll already, again, the smell's gone, everything's gone, it'll just be them picking up.
And some of the other questions we had, again, it was a lot about screening, dogs, visibility of dogs, seeing dogs. So based on what you're telling us, if they come out to the north side, near the screening area, and you take them out to their area, will people have line of sight to the dogs outside of that footprint?
No.
So you'll have some other type of fencing or screening?
We're going to have a fencing, we're going to have like a nine-foot privacy fence that's completely closed in, where you can't see through it. I know on our property, we have found, since we've been doing events, dogs coming from the neighborhood, wandering onto our property. And I don't want a dog who's not one of ours coming into our property, so it will be fenced completely around the areas where the dogs will be in, you know, the play area. So no dog can come into it, although the screens are there and everything. I still don't want a dog coming up and barking at these dogs and getting our dogs excited, because it's on the outside. So they won't be able to see it. No one will be able to see the facility, because it will be fenced in the back.
So the only out, I'm beating this like a dead horse, but we had a lot of questions about this. If the dog goes outside, the only place it's going is behind a fence, screening, exterior fence, north side of the building, in that area where it shows on the drawing, on the top of the drawing, and then behind the next fence. So from a noise standpoint, if those doors are up, obviously a dog out there, yes, dogs bark, we all get that. Is that the only place? Is the rest of the building fully conditioned, windows closed, around the rest of the envelope?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. It's fully, it's climate-controlled, everything. Once our front door's shut, you won't hear anything. We're doing everything we can to prevent sound. We're doing extra things, you know, talking with Crawford, doing extra things to make sure we soundproof a lot of it. I've had my dogs in facilities in different places, and as I've made, said to Crawford, I said, "I wanna make sure that our building is, if there's a tornado coming, these dogs are safe." So, when you do that, it's gonna, you know, we're reinforcing things, making sure, which is also gonna help with any sound.
Have, have you done this type of project before?
I have not. I have friends that own places. They have them in Florida, they have them in Pennsylvania, they have them in California. So, I talk to them, but I have never done this kind of place.
So, if you're gonna have, you're saying a hundred to a hundred and fifty dogs, possibly? Those dogs have to go out a pretty good bit, that many. You got different types of dogs that would bark, or get other dogs riled up. How are you gonna control that? I mean?
We're gonna have staff.
How many staff? I mean?
It depends on how many dogs that we actually, when we're completely done with everything, depends on how many dogs we're actually gonna say, at capacity, this is it. But there'll be, for like, every five dogs, there'll be a staff member. And the dogs won't all be at the same time playing. We're gonna have different areas. There's gonna be a small dog area. So, it's never gonna interact with a large dog. And a medium dog is never gonna interact with the large dog. They're gonna have their own areas where they're by themselves. So, all small dogs, tiny dogs, medium dogs, large dogs will be by themselves.
And you, I know this is potentially a large number of dogs.
Yes.
Vets, board dogs, other places board dogs all the time, usually caged, of some, in some sort of a cage or run. At night, will the, will there be any staff around the clock, or do y'all leave?
No, we're manned twenty-four seven.
So, you will have?
Someone will be there twenty-four seven, yes. We're building a small apartment, not apartment, but a little area for someone to stay overnight.
Question for staff. How many parking spaces is in this project?
So, with this, that's not something, that is more so with the PUD and all of that. There's some other staff that are a little more hands-on with it than I am. I know that with this parcel specifically, they're kind of having to compensate for a lack of parking with some of the other adjacent parcels. So, there is gonna be a significant amount of parking required for this. On what they have now, I believe I counted a little under a hundred. But that was only with what they're showing, being proposed right now, not even the rest of that western portion.
Are there, are there any plans for that other portion right now?
We've thrown a few things around, possibly a restaurant, a vet's office, but we're not sure what we wanna do with the rest of it.
The only reason I, I'm curious about the parking, is if you do have a hundred and fifty dogs, and you have one employee per five dogs, wondering where they're gonna park to go?
And again, I'm not exactly sure how many employee ratio is. I'm still talking to the people who own other ones, to find out what the ratio is. So, I can't say exactly for every dog, five dogs, I'm gonna have one person. I'm still in the process of figuring out exactly how much staff, because we were just deciding on what the square footage is, and so now I'll be looking at the staffing of it.
When you talked about having a waiting list of eighty-three people, any of those people from the towns?
Ninety percent of them are.
And when you talked about five hundred plus pictures were taken, how many of those people were from the towns?
Probably about eighty to ninety percent of them were.
Okay.
And on the, I know this is proposed. Everything to the left or west, that's in the darker green, that's all speculative, is that fair? This point, you don't know what, you'll put there, what layout?
We don't know what we're gonna do with it. It might just stay like it is.
Okay. And, but from halfway over the traffic circle and landscaping back, is that fairly close to what your, what your plans will be for permitting?
Yes.
Similar?
So, the screens that are to the north, there, where, is this where you're gonna take the dogs out?
Yes.
Is it just gonna be to this north area, in this little green space, with the, with the trees? I mean, that seems a pretty small area for, for dogs there. You're not gonna utilize any of this future area for taking that dogs?
We're gonna, I guess we're gonna use what area we can, we're allowed to use for them, but we, we do have, we would like to expand it some, to give them an area to go to the bathroom. But these dogs will be not just running around to go to the bathroom. They're out there on leashes, do their business, and then back in.
You have the ability, kinda to Mr. Gilliam's point, that the way the parking is laid out, the way the driveway is laid out, you've got a relatively small green space buffer, you've got landscaping shown in there, the trees. Would you have the ability to take more parking on the north property line to the west, whether you go into the traffic circle, that curve, perhaps? Actual parking, employee parking, overflow, what have you? And then maybe lose some of these closer spaces there, or some configuration, to have more screening to the north, because that's the least offensive area?
Disruptive, yeah.
Disruptive area to the neighbors' concerns, like, you know, from sight lines?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay.
Yes, we could absolutely do that.
I think that's a good point. If you can utilize more north area than, than to the west, you're staying further away from all the residents.
That's why we chose this side of the property to build it, instead of the other side of the property. We're trying to, you know, stay far enough away.
What's, is this whole, what's all gonna be fenced in? Where, where, where's, what is your fenced area? I mean, I know you got this.
The fencing is probably going to be, we're still deciding, but it would probably be the highlighted yellow in the back.
Where's it? You're out, I'm talking about your outside fencing. Because you're gonna have outside fencing, correct?
Yes, we are.
To walk your dogs. Where is that gonna be in relation? Because you don't have a lot of green space shown on this.
I'm still Crawford Nixon, at two oh one three oh, Sanders Ferry Road. I probably know more about dog spas, dog boarding facilities, than anybody in Tuscaloosa. And I didn't seek it out. I can probably answer several of your questions that y'all have asked, and they didn't know the answers to. You know, stop me when you want. The sewage, I'm gonna go back to the sewage disposal. I actually own the property right off Fifteenth Street, behind O'Reilly's. I'm the owner. I scrutinize that to the nth degree. And in full disclosure, I let both parties know that I own this, so that they wouldn't think I'm bringing somebody in on the other side. So, they, these products are completely opposite. The one on Sixteenth Street, to the sewage question, it goes directly into the city sewer. They have a, a large, I'm gonna say it's a, a small septic tank, and it is daily cleaned. And I have seen it, witnessed it, studied the specs on it, and also I'm a contractor. That's what I'm doing here. So that they can remove it daily. They, they call it a hair trap, sort of a septic tank trap. But the rest of the fluids bypass that, and it's to catch that, so that everything else can go straight into the sanitary.
So, it's got a baffle system?
Yes, sir. You know, it kinda looks, this is a very large, I would say forty-eight inches to sixty inches long, three foot wide, lightweight poly, so you can pick it up and remove it. Obviously perforated, to pick up on one end and capture on the other, and still allow fluids to come through, but to catch hair that wouldn't cause a problem. Now, that, that facility, and I'm just answering questions. This is their fifth one. The one that y'all just approved, it's their fifth. Their models are completely separate, so they, they do have experience with that. And one thing that shocked me, to the noise issue, they have two in downtown Birmingham. One's very close to UAB, they probably told y'all that. And the other one's on the Rotary, Rotary Trail, was that right? Yeah, really nice area. I was very surprised, honestly, that dogs could be, could remain that quiet. In those buildings, the one that they have by UAB is a closed cell phone. Ironically, it's a Quonset hut. And that's what y'all allowed over here, that's, that's a Quonset hut. It's a dome shape. And that sound really doesn't, it doesn't come outside. I went and sat out there to know. Because I have a vested interest here, and I'm, I may have one here. So, I'm just objectively telling you that about the sound. Over here, they've got about, I think about eight thousand foot on Sixteenth Street, of outside play space. That lot is probably about thirty-two thousand square foot. I'm going off memory now. On Sixteenth Street, behind O'Reilly's, that contains two buildings and some property that will not be used. This property is three and a quarter acres, I believe. It's very big. I don't know if y'all talked about the size of this, but we're on the east end of the property. And the far end that says future is the closest house. And that's, that's all high density, I mean, that's the towns. But those are not, those are some of the larger homes that are not packed in quite as tight. And I, and I would say that that's probably from where this building is located, to that fence that is on the end of the future property right now, which is actually already a brick wall. I don't know if y'all showed that picture, but there's a brick wall there already. And behind is, is a wooded area for another assisted living. So, I can't tell you, dogs are not gonna bark. But I was surprised, the facilities I visited, at how well that is managed. I know for the neighbors up there, that I, I know so many that live there. And I've also worked on, I'm working on one now, and two other businesses that, that I've just completed. Hairdough House, which is next door. They're very pet friendly, they're walking dogs in all day long to get there precise. Works really well. And smells really good outside. And the doctor's office that I just finished, and, and now the multi-use. So, as I've been on site, I've had a lot of people ask me about the building I'm building right now, which is a multi-use. That is a, and y'all may have heard that. That was a mixed-use retail down and a loft apartment upstairs. So, everybody thought that was this product. So, I've answered those questions, and I think as best I could, from what I've seen of these plans, and what they wanna do, for the structure, and as well as they wanna do it, I haven't seen one, and I have researched and looked, anything in the country this nice. So, this isn't a facility that, from an appearance standpoint, that anyone I feel would have a problem with. Because architects here, it conforms with the existing architectural structures that are there, in height and proportionate size. And to answer Mr. Gardner's question on it, the driveway on the east end, that was an existing easement requirement. Didn't you ask about the east driveway? Yeah. It was captured a long time ago, and that was an existing easement that was covered in the PUD, I believe, and a requirement of the seller. Yeah, that, that jog right there is that, is where it is at. No, sir?
Is it in the curve right there?
It's, it's in that curve. Where you see that, Mr. Gardner, that jog, or that dog leg, where that ninety-degree offset is in the property line, it runs right down that eastern property line, and it aligns with that northern building that's directly beyond, north of this property, which is now a garage. I mean, a storage room, not an actual garage. Which is owned, I think that's about an acre and a half property that is owned by the prior owner of this property. So, he wanted that access to provide this for future traffic flow. And that's where that came from. I'm not saying that's.
I, I still, I still think that there, there needs to be some analysis of that location. What does this business end up doing as far as traffic flow? That, that access looks like it's more geared toward the employees, maybe, or, or in HEGs, where most of your customers are gonna come to the roundabout, and the portico chair there at the front of the building.
I think you're right. I think that would probably be a, an employee parking area.
I just still think it needs, it, it needs some analysis beyond this meeting.
So, that'll be handled when it gets to that stage, through the LDP and et cetera?
Yes, sir, yeah. But still, the question on what, what is gonna be completely fenced off? I still don't understand, or I've heard that answer.
Well, I would say, right?
If you're looking at your site.
Pretty fast. The far west side of this property already has a brick fence that is probably five feet tall. It's, it's tall, it's not a four. Now, moving back easterly, I would say behind the building that you're looking at, or north of that building, in the screening, we're not there yet. I think that's why we're here today. If you said that needed to be of a, of a certain material, I can only tell you that what was used, that y'all just approved on Sixteenth Street, was a wooden flat fence. Some of it's vertical, and some of it's horizontal. And I, and I, when I say that, it had gouts, the horizontal had gouts to allow for airflow. I don't think I can fully answer that question, other than to say that.
Well, I think a lot, what we're trying to do is get an answer. A lot of the comments from people who were opposed, maybe don't know, can't speak for them, but a lot of it was concern over the noise and odor, kind of a catch-all concern. And how would that, what type of medium, what type of barrier would help mitigate some of that? And that's, and I know, petitioner Ms. Page, you mentioned the north side, where you showed the four, three roll-up doors, and that screening? That north side of the building, or the east end of the property, is the most remote from the homeowners, who would be, have the most exposure. There's a good distance, we get that, but we just kinda wanted some clarity on, you know, where that would be, roughly, and how would that be? Because I took away from Mrs. Page that that was an area where they would be contained. They wouldn't be walked for their outdoor activity to the west. Is that, is that fair?
I think that is an accurate statement. And I will tell you one thing, as it pertains to fencing, and I, I went straight to, let's build a fence. There, there is going to be a lot of evergreens, and I mean substantial, and at a, at a rate that you'd almost have a fifteen, twenty, or thirty-foot tall wall, that would be evergreens, which is a much better barrier, if you're familiar with fencing, than anything you can build. And not only on the, on the west end of the property, but also all around the property. There's gonna be a lot for, you know, to help with, just like these sound panels on this wall, just to help with sound.
For the purpose of what we're hearing tonight, because we're not regulating a fence, or any of, some of the questions we're trying to get an answer to, we're not actually regulating on what we're looking to vote on. So, I think that will come later with, as the process evolves, if y'all move forward.
Yeah. And I just stepped up to help with any questions, as maybe a potential builder?
Questions?
Who owns a property down the road, and might work on this one.
Thank you.
I am Richard Harwood, twenty-nine Twenty-seventh Street, downtown Tuscaloosa, oh one. I sold the property, we, Harwood Real Estate. The owner of the property, before we bought the property, went to the homeowners. If you can pull that overview up, that shows the actual houses, right there. He went to those homeowners that are closest, and told them what was a prospect there. I think maybe just about all of them, maybe not all, but just about all of them were pet owners, welcomed it, didn't have any opposition. If you're familiar with the, the way you go in the towns, there's that, that brick wall. And then once you get in, those are larger estate lots, and then you get into the deeper, what I call the hat, the rooftops. those are larger estate lots and then you get into the deeper, what I call the hat, the rooftops. So I don't really think, probably ninety-nine percent of the neighborhood would hear a dog bark anyway if it did. But the ones that are closest to have already been notified and, and that, that's how we proceeded forward with what we're doing now.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
And I apologize that I don't know a hundred percent of the details. We're still in the stages of making everything come to reality.
Well, we've got several people signed up to speak, so we'll probably, probably have some questions and ask you to come back up to answer those. Okay, thank you. Actually, I think Ms. Pate, you'd sign the list as well to speak. We've already got you. I think it might have been some confusion. And then John, is it McChesney? Is that right? Okay, okay. And then the last one, is anyone else, did anyone else sign up to speak for or against in the audience? Well, in that case, we do not have anybody else. Is anyone else left in the audience choosing to speak? No? Okay, we're going to, at this point, close public comment and move to board discussion. Just, just for some background, Ms. Hayes, I'm not trying to extend this. If you'll pull up the Muni code again, that's got the columns with B and S on there. Now, as you can see from this sheet she just had, we had wholesale store serving, very broad category because what we're talking about doesn't currently exist. Nope.
Well, it's neighborhood commercials, so it's a little bit more restricted than the BN category. But still, some commonalities within that automobile truck parts store, obviously cafe, coffee house, just like Heritage House, doctor's office.
Could put a bank. Okay, by right, okay. So you, you can see there's a list of uses by right that B and S covers. You know, some of those would potentially, if you see restaurants covered, et cetera. So basically, you could have some commercial businesses in there that could have hours with customers coming and going, perhaps much more severe than what may be here from that respect. And those are by right, would not come before this body. And just for everyone's benefit, the B and S zoning was put in as part of the PUD when this development came to fruition. So anyone who bought a home here, you know, it's buyer beware, but when the first home and lot was sold, this commercial zoning was in place. So it sat idle for what, ten, fifteen years? Like a lot of the lots out there we're talking about, now that the demand, the commercial demand is driving development and, you know, business investment, we're seeing these get built. I think in saying all of that, people oftentimes are afraid of the unknown. They're used to a green lot that was landscaped or mowed, coming and going, and all of a sudden they see construction site, construction activity. They oftentimes have concerns. They're not necessarily fully informed. You know, they might have misconceptions. And that, and that's fair. And this is, part of this process is doing that. So that's why we wanted to help have the issues and that came up in the emails that the public put in addressed and, and hope, I think that's been fairly well done by the petitioner and her representatives. In saying that, looking at the screen in front of you, it's a catch-all kind of category, but in saying that, the primary, the objectives we have to look at that have to be met, A and B are, and they really don't apply. Discretionary, again, doesn't really apply. It's a unique structure. It sounds very interesting. Based on Mr. Nixon's comments from his previous experience with another tenant, which came before this board, a little different concept, again, different. And some of the links, it sounds like the petitioner is exploring on the waste scenario, how to deal with that. Hopefully, the proper screening and being cognizant of your neighbors and their concerns. I think it's a pretty good fit. I think you're targeting for a premium pet spa, excuse me, you're targeting the best demographic in Tuscaloosa who would probably want to use these services. In the, in that O-six zip code, District Three. They'll spend a whole lot of money on their pets. In saying that, I don't see that this is going to cause any great harm to the area, the neighboring residents. And Ms. Pate, you came before this body for the seasonal opportunity there. You heard from six or seven residents of the towns that night, I think when they walked away, they seemed more comfortable when they came in because we were talking about a very short-term specific use, which we did approve. I would say keep your level of engagement up. I think it will be to your benefit. And it sounds like you are doing that, but please continue to do that effort with the residents there or anyone who's inquires. But I'm, I'm in favor of passing.
I mean, I agree with the rendering and everything. Looks very nice. I don't, I don't really see an issue with this business going in this location.
I'm in favor of a special exception. I think it's exciting for you to have a waiting list of eighty-three people wanting to already use the daycare for the pets. I think that shows that it's going to be well-used. And I think the people who are against it just don't understand what's coming and how nice. I think it's going to be extremely nice, probably nicer than anything some of their, you know, that they use for some other things. So I'm, I'm in favor of it and I think it'll be an asset once it's fully materializes.
I agree with my other board members. I'm in favor.
All my questions were answered. I am, I had that lot of questions about it, but I think they were, they were all answered. I am in favor of it.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll be moved to a reading. Reading of the petition and a vote. ZBA one thirty-seven dash twenty-two, Barbara Pate, petitions for a special exception to allow specialized retail dealing with limited or specialized clientele on the property located at thirteen zero-two, the town's zone B and S, Council District Three, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 The petition passed.
Okay, so moving on to our final case for the night, ZBA one thirty-eight twenty-two. Eric Hamner petitions for multiple variances from the residential district regulations on the properties located at nine oh one through nine twenty-one Bedford Place North, zoned RMF one, Council District Three. So here's an aerial view of those properties as well as the zoning. And then a closer aerial view. These are all existing structures. They recently went through a resurvey of the lots. Nothing is being built here. Everything is remaining the same aesthetics-wise, the way that it looks. So here's just examples of the structures. These are lots ten and eleven. So the applicable regulations, section twenty-four dash thirty-four, lot standards, specifically with area, it requires with the RMF one zoning district, for single-family dwellings to have a seventy-five hundred square foot lot minimum. For the yards and usable open space for front yards, it's required to be twenty-five feet. Side yards, a aggregate of fourteen feet with the least width being five feet, and rear yards with a minimum of thirty feet. This shirt is requesting for multiple variances from these regulations in order to denote the existing structures on lots one through eleven as legal non-conforming. A portion of the request is for variance from the minimum lot size for lot ten. It's approximately seventy-four hundred square feet. It's required to be seventy-five hundred. The other variances are as follows, for the front and rear setbacks for lots one through eleven, as well as the side setbacks for lots ten and eleven. So front yard, again, requiring twenty-five feet. They are requesting for fifteen to be set. Rear yard, thirty feet, ten feet for the rear yard, and then the minimum to be changed to two feet. So this is the plat. And then I'll show you one that has been highlighted by the petitioner. So you can see with this, this kind of light green on yours, that's that fifteen-foot front setback. The blue is going to be that ten-foot rear. And then right over here in this pink is the two lots being affected by that two-foot side setback. And lot ten is the one that they are requesting the variance from the lot size. And then I went through and kind of highlighted it a little bit further, just so you could really clearly see exactly what's happening here. So this process is not required. They don't, they're not required to go through this. Essentially, the petitioner is wanting to go through this process and they can explain it a little bit better, especially Mr. Winter with the attorney lingo of it. But they're going through this process because if you can denote it as legal non-conforming, just rather than non-conforming, you can avoid some issues with insurance, with loans and things like that. And so that's why they are coming before you to request the variances to denote these as legal non-conforming. Do y'all have any questions for staff?
So when they were built, is what zoning were they built under?
From my understanding, they, I don't believe the zoning has changed. I'm not exactly sure. We tried to look back and see how these were built. I believe it's going to come into the standards at the time for the zoning district of why this wasn't regulated at that point. But I do know these were built pretty good long time ago.
So it was legal non-conforming or considered that way and it has been that way?
Right. So right now, it's considered non-conforming, but the minute that the ZBA grants them these variances, if you do so, that's when it adds that legal status to it, saying they have this specific approval that these setbacks are okay.
Good evening. Eric Hamner with TTL, thirty-five sixteen Greensboro Avenue, representing Bedford East Homeowners Association. Ms. Emily gave a pretty good summary of this, so I will just take any questions you have at the moment.
And I understand the desire to get it cleaned up so in a future sale, there are no issues or no, no hiccups with it.
That is correct. And, and as it stands now, like the front minimum, like you see that some of these houses, I mean, they're, I don't want to switch this screen back. Can you go back to the plat? I mean, that's a fifteen-foot minimum. I don't think there's any current code that they conform to now. I mean, even before we, if we didn't do anything. So.
Well, the horse is out of the barn because.
Yeah.
They're there and.
And as far as, I'm not familiar with what the code was. I did look it up earlier. These were all built between eighty-five and eighty-eight. So they've been there for thirty-five years.
Can you go to the aerial, please? Yeah, thank you. So basically, Indian Hills didn't go anywhere. So everything that touches it to the south, southeast, east, is golf course for the most part. Then what is that north of that line?
That is, I'm sorry, north of.
North of the red line, the northmost line. Right there.
Oh, you're talking about those buildings up there? I think one's a doctor's office. I'm not sure.
So it, it currently backs up to a different, commercial building that's existing. Okay. So commercial buildings, medical professional offices around it and golf course around it, and then another part of Bedford Place. Any other questions? I don't think we have anything more for you. I don't know if you were wanting to speak, mister? Okay. Well, hold on. Maybe she can blame it on you if you don't get it. We do not have anyone currently signed up to speak. So does anyone who's left want to join us at the podium? Okay, no. We're going to close public comment and move to board discussion. I can't see any harm in granting this because the obstacle, and again, I'm a little unclear on the zoning when it was allowed. Was it approved under any exception? Okay. Well, thank you. And based on that, that, that alone, depending on what it was and they were permitted and built, any legal non-conforming status was allowed by granting a building permit. So we're trying to get it to a clear for future sale, perhaps, clearing anything up that is not conforming, legal non-conforming, to get it to a legal status is what I'm seeing. The request is, I think that is in everyone's best interest. We know what's out here. Anybody who's lived in Tuscaloosa, you know, great, they do well. It's a good neighborhood. But what's around it are solid businesses, from a golf club to doctor's offices in, in a good spot. I don't see any issue with any, any harm to any surrounding property owner in, in granting this. And like I said, they're, they're there and it was allowed to be there per the permitting initially. So I'm in favor of granting the three variances. Ms. Hayes? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, this build has been there. I, I see no issue in granting.
I agree with my fellow board members.
I agree as well.
I agree.
And I know I've got our sheet, but as far as the, is it three separate votes or can we catch this in one vote? Because I don't have them broken out separately. Okay, so the first vote is going to be, can you go back to the three? The three variances.
Is this, so with this one, the first one is going to be that minimum lot size for lot ten?
Okay, that's number one.
Correct.
Okay, so that's lot ten for the minimum lot size?
Right.
Okay, and then the second is lot?
Is the easiest way to do it, to do separating them out into like lots one through nine are going to be for the variances from the front and rear? And then lots ten and eleven are going to be the variances from side setbacks as well as the, Odo, what do you think the best way to break it down is? Lot standards, setbacks for the front, rear, and then side setbacks for lots ten and eleven.
Okay, one more time, lots?
So lot standard for the lot area for lot ten.
Okay.
Front and rear setbacks for lots one through eleven. And side setbacks for lots ten and eleven.
Catch me if you need on here. Okay. All right, three votes, okay. ZBA one thirty-eight dash twenty-two, Eric Hamner petitions for multiple variances from the residential district regulations on the properties located at nine zero one through nine twenty-one Bedford Place North, zoned RMF one, Council District Three. That was the reading of the petition, first reading, okay. So for lots one through nine, the lot standard, we're asking for a variance to the setbacks of the front and rear. Excuse me, one through eleven, okay. Voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
That variance was approved. Do I need to read through the whole? Do I need to read through the whole petition or just the specific? Specific, okay. The second variance to be considered is for the front, for the lot standard for lots 1 through 9?
So the second variance is going to be a variance for the side, setbacks for lots 10 and 11.
Okay. Okay. The second variance to be considered is for lots 10 and 11 for the side yard setbacks. Voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes.
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 Variance passed.
The final is a variance on the lot here, for lot.
And the third variance is for the variance for the, from the lot standards for the lot minimum for lot 10, voting with Mr. Gilliam.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All three requests or variance requests passed. You'll be a hero, not a zero with my in-law. Here you go. Sorry, I couldn't get my hands on that.
Oh, yes, return.
Yeah.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, Happy New Year.
Long and sweet. Well.
Okay.
I played tennis yesterday. I'm playing tomorrow Friday indoors. Oh, you're so cute.
Rob.